Good evening, welcome to this evening's council meeting. It's a regular council meeting for Monday, December 14th, 2015. I'm Mayor Ted Schaefer, and with me this evening are my council colleagues, Councilor Jack Arnold, Councilor Paul Albrecht, Councilor Rudy Stortaboom, Councilor Gail Martin, Councilor Val Vandenberg.
Hi.
And at the staff table, we have Graham Flack, our Deputy Director of Corporate Services; Carolyn Mashada, Manager of Legislative Services; Francis Chung, our Chief Administrative Officer. And the other table, we have Gerald Minchuck, Director of Development Services and Economic Development; Rick Baumhoff, Director of Engineering, Parks and Environment; and Kim Hilton, Director of Recreation, Culture, and Community Services. First item is the adoption of the agenda, that the December 14th, 2015 agenda be adopted and circulated. Need a mover and a seconder. Councilor Albrecht, Councilor Stortaboom, all those in favor? It's unanimous four. The next item we have is the minutes, the minutes held on December 7th, 2015, be adopted circulated, a mover and a seconder. Councilor Vandenberg, Councilor Martin, all those in favor? It's unanimous four. The next item we have is a delegation. We have a delegation from the Rotary Club of Langley. We have David Truman and Vaheed Vasner to do a presentation. Welcome, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and councilors.
Make sure you use the mic. That's, yeah.
I'm loud.
There you, there you go. Okay, there we go. Perfect.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and councilors. We're very happy to be here tonight. My name's David Truman, I'm the Treasurer of the Rotary Club of Langley, and with me is Vaheed Yasdenmier, who is also a member of our club. We are here tonight because Rotary Club of Langley would like to make a gift to the city of Langley, and what we would like to do is we would like to give a tower clock to the, to the city of Langley in memory of two people who you both know of. Reg Easingwood, who has the key to the city and a former mayor, and his, his wife, oop, I think I've got to use the mouse here, there we go, Kay Easingwood, both of whom were members of our club. Pictured above is the clock model that we would be proposing to install. The clock that would actually be here would have the rotary wheel on the inside of the clock face. Other than that, pretty well identical, Vaheed?
Yes.
Okay, identical to that, other than that. With previous discussions I've had with staff, we understand that you would like to have a chime mechanism in the clock, and we would supply that. The entire cost of the clock is a bit over $20,000, and our club would be absorbing that entire cost. We would just be asking that the city supply a base and the electric power for the clock to be installed. We also understand from previous conversations that you would be interested in having it not far from this building, near the corner of Fraser Highway and 204 Street, and we're quite happy with that location. There would be a plaque installed, and we'd work on exactly what that would say, basically saying that the clock was in memory of Kay and Reg Easingwood. And I believe as soon as, you know, council approves this, that we will have the clock built. Vaheed here operates its About Time business right over here on Fraser Highway, and he would actually be, be building the clock and supplying it.
Thank you. Is there questions from councilmember? Councilor Martin?
Thank you very much. I'm happy that you're, you're happy with the location that, that was chosen. I, I think it's probably going to have a lot of exposure on that corner. The question I have is, once it's approved and you start, what, what is the timeline on it?
Eight weeks.
Eight weeks.
Approximately eight weeks, we'd have it available to be installed.
So the opening of the TIM Center is February the 24th, so it should be there in lots of time?
Yeah, that could be...
Cutting it close.
Could be, cutting it close, but we can probably do that.
Okay, great, thank you very much.
Councilor Arnold.
Yeah, hi. Okay, you said something about on the face that, or did you want that put in the Rotary?
Well, the Rotary emblem, as is on my jacket here, with is the, the spoke wheel, that would be on the face, the white face of the clock.
Okay, do you need to get permission from Rotary International to have another?
No, as, as a Rotary club, we are allowed to use that, that symbol. Clocks like this are very common in, in many cities throughout the world. In fact, last year I saw one almost identical to this in Hamilton, Bermuda, right in front of their city hall.
Councilor Vandenberg?
I just want a clarification, actually, I think from staff, on are we doing the upkeep on the clock?
Through the chair, yes, we are.
Okay.
After there is built, we'll be maintaining it.
And do we have to go through, I guess you, it's about time to have it done, or does it matter where we go to have it done, or?
Actually, it's a maintenance free. The movement of the clock is running on a battery, and the battery should be replaced every fire, uh, once every five years.
Okay.
So, and the light is an LED light, and it comes in under, at night, and it goes off in the daylight. So it lasts, you know, 10 years before it needs anything done to it. So it's a maintenance free. The only thing you may want to upkeep it, just wash it once in a while.
Right.
Just to get the odd dust off, that's all.
Okay. Just one more, the plaque or insignia, what are you thinking about putting on there? I just want to make sure it's theft deterrent.
We'll, we'll work with Mr. Chung as to exactly what that plaque looks like and what it says.
Okay, excellent, thank you.
Councilor Albrecht, and then Councilor Arnold.
Yes, thank you for your presentation, and thank you for the generous gift. I also want to acknowledge the, the recognition of some valuable history in, in the community with putting this up in the name of Easingwood, so thank you very much.
You're welcome. Any, any further questions? Councilor Arnold?
Yeah, okay, one other question, now Val asked about maintenance, and you said it would have to be cleaned. Would it have to be cleaned physically, or can you just take a hose to it?
Just take your hose to it, it's water.
Okay, so that saves a lot of man hours. All right, thank you.
Thank you for your presentation, gentlemen, and council could deal with this now if they like. Council like to deal with this now. I have a motion that staff has, has written up for me, and I can read it out.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, if it's all right with you. I'll just excuse myself from this particular piece of business. I'm a proud member of this particular Rotarian club, and just to be sure that there's no apparent conflict of interest perception, there is no pecuniary benefit for me, no financial benefit, but I will remove myself from this particular resolution discussion and vote, and thank you very much. Please call me when we're done.
Okay, the motion that staff have drawn up is that council authorize up to $10,000 from the Enterprise Fund for the installation of the base and electrical service required for the new clock at the southwest corner of the intersection of Fraser Highway and 204 Street that is donated by the Rotary Club of Langley. Moved by Councilor Martin, seconded by Councilor Albrecht, all those in favor? It's unanimous four. So, gentlemen, thank you very much for your, your kind donation to the city, and...
Well, thank you very much, and, and we'll, we'll do our best to get it ready for the opening of the TIM Center, that would be wonderful.
Yeah, that would be excellent if you could have it ready for that February opening.
What's the date exactly?
February 24th.
February 24th, and we expect you to be there with your garden hose yearly, Vaheed?
February 20th is my birthday, so, thank you very much.
Thank you for coming, gentlemen. Under the mayor's report, the upcoming meetings, the next one is in the New Year, it's January 11th, 2016, and that will be televised. Next one after that is January 25th, 2016. Under Metro Vancouver, Councilor Stortaboom, do you have anything?
Oh, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This past Friday, Metro Vancouver held their inaugural meeting for the 2016 year, and reelected Greg Morris Chair, and reelected Raymond Louie as Vice Chair. There was a closed meeting, and an announcement will be forthcoming from that on Friday. The board and brief is expected to be coming through very shortly, and it's also been identified that Metro has determined to halt any process moving forward for waste to energy with regard to the garbage incinerator that was talked about for so long, and that's relatively due to current efficiencies, but it may be a proposal in the future. And that is my report. Any questions?
Thank you, Councilor Stortaboom.
Thank you.
Councilor Martin, Library Happenings.
Thank you. The City of Langley Library Happenings for December the 14th. Once again, the City of Langley Library is a major partner in the annual Rappa Read project at the Langley Christmas Bureau. This project ensures that all children and teens aged 0 to 18 registered with the Langley Christmas Bureau receives a new book during the Christmas Bureau's Toy Depot Days. Library staff with Langley's Literacy Outreach Coordinator has already purchased over 1,000 books, carefully selected and sorted by age and reading ability. Funds for these purchases are raised throughout the year through the Langley Literacy Association from municipal, community, business, and individual donors. The City of Langley has been a donor for many years. On Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday of this week at the Bureau, library staff will join community volunteers, including friends of the library, to match each child and teen with a book that piques their interest. Giving children and teens books that excite them and that reflect their unique interests goes a long way to develop in them a love of reading that may continue throughout their lives. And I just want to remind everybody till the end of December that the Food for Fines campaign is taking place at the library. The library will waive $2 for every non-perishable item brought into the library. If you have fines, up to $30. And other than that, a Merry Christmas from the Fraser Valley Regional Library. Thank you.
Great. Questions at all? None? Thank you, Councilor Martin. Next item we have is a recreation update from Ms. Hilton.
Good evening, Your Worship, Members of Council and our audience. This is the update for Recreation, Culture, and Community Services for our December, month of December. Always starting with special events, we do have some more caroling in McBurney Plaza. The next session is on December the 19th, between 6:30 and 7:30 PM, so please come down and join us in the plaza and help raise the voice as we sing Christmas carols. For youth from 12 to 17, we have a Christmas Chaos Event. Wear your craziest Christmas sweater, come down for some fun holiday games, and some great treats, and that's at TIM's Community Center. That's from 7 to 10 on the 19th of December, and for more information, you can phone 5, Hopefully, you'll be seeing these stocking stuffers throughout our community. We launched this new promotion at the Christmas Parade, and this is to get you a one free pass to TIM's Community Center. You can use this at the current community center, or you can use it at the new center opening on February the 24th, and by turning the stocking stuffer to the backside, you'll see that you can get seven more days, seven free visits, in addition to the one free pass, just by logging on to that website at timscumunity.ca/gift. It's easy, and I think a colleague of mine will be showing you how to do it right after my presentation. So if you want to hit the road running for your New Year's resolution, the Running Room does have their January 1st Running Room Resolution Run, and that's based out of Douglas Park, and it starts at 10:00 AM on January the 1st. For more information or to register, you can phone 604-534-2112. And now on to our programs. Our Winter Recreation Guide was delivered last week to homes throughout the city of Langley, a little bit into the township, and then into Surrey. This is your recreational opportunities for January, February, March, lots of things to check out. We do have the Recreation Guide online as well, and new is you can click right through to our registration system just by clicking on the barcodes now, so it's very convenient. If you see something you like, click on the barcode and you can register right away. You can pick up a guide in our community center, Douglas Rec Center, City Hall, Library. We do offer Winter Fest Day Camps for children ages 5 to 12, for those weeks where school is out of session, but parents may still have to work, or if you want to just give the kids a break and let them have some fun at the rec center. We offer individual days, you can register for one week or for two weeks, and for more information, you can phone 604-514-2865. We do have before and after care as well, and there are some spots available still. Just want to give everyone a heads up that we do have some different operating hours during the Christmas season. We have been posting these in our local newspaper, they'll be also on the different front doors of various facilities. TIM's Community Center is open almost throughout the entire winter break, but with reduced hours. So the 27th through to the 31st, it's open from 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM. We are closed on Christmas Day, Boxing Day, and January the 1st. City Hall will be open until 4:30 on the 24th, and then we'll open up again in the New Year. So for more information, you can check out our website, or check out the local newspaper for the hours of operation. It's now my honor to introduce Samantha Paulson, our Communications Officer. She's going to be speaking to you about our promotional campaign that's going on currently. Samantha.
Hello, Mayor and Council, and...
The mic, you've got to be down at the mic.
Sorry. So, good evening, everyone. I'm going to be going over the TIM's promotional strategy, so I will start here. So the creative concept for the overall six-month strategy is the anatomy of a healthy family. It fits with the City of Langley's focus on prevention, connection, and family. Just going to go quickly to the key messages within all of our campaigns. It's the grand opening and open house. The grand opening is February 24th, and the open house is April 9th. Our focus is encouraging and promoting the new facility, the new equipment, amenities, and expanded community programs. Our third message is promoting it as a community hub with all three services in one building. December's campaign concept was the season of giving, so why not give the gift of health? A lot of people, what we, in our discussions, you know, focus on giving electronics or other things that might not be so healthy for you, so we thought, why not use that as a great avenue to promote healthy living in the City of Langley to residents and visitors? And I will go through what we've provided in this campaign. So, the stocking stuffer, as Kim briefly mentioned, it is a one free day pass to either, to either facility, and it's valid till April 30th, 2016. They can use that at either or, and if they sign up online to timscumunity.ca, they can get an extra seven additional visits. So, I'm just going to show you what this website looks like. Is that full screen? So, as you can see, it's rendering funny, anyways, so it shows the place to connect, be, using our slogan, build relationships. We have a countdown to the grand opening to make people aware of, you know, when it's actually coming. This is where you can give us a week, and you'll be hooked, this free seven visits. So when you click on this link, all we're asking from residents or visitors, or anyone who's interested in the campaign, to give us your email address, your first and last name, and if you'd like to receive the newsletter, to do additional promotions to them for membership and other things that are coming along in the next, on the following months. If you go down the page, you will see that this is our summary. Here's our promotion, give the gift of health this holiday season, where you can go and buy a 10 or 20 pass. And one of our, our big offerings is buy a yearly pass, you could, and you can pay for it with credit card and do monthly payments, which is much more affordable for a lot of families, and you'll receive one month free. Then we also have our amenities, which links back to the City of Langley's, sorry, page where it talks about the countdown, what's available when the grand opening and open house are going to be happening, as well as fitness classes and the winter schedule. So this is our primary campaign, we're going to be using this throughout the full six months. We're going to be changing the, the look and feel of this splash page, it's basically a one-page website, and so far, it's going really well. We have 100, over 100 subscribers, our social media presence has increased quite a bit, and we're getting a lot of interactions with residents and visitors. Just to go back to the presentation, so that's our splash page. So once they sign up for that newsletter, they will receive an email, an automatic email that will be a confirmation of the seven visits. They can either show this to the TIM's Recreation Staff on their phone, or print it out. We also have an option for residents to come in and sign up with staff if they, if they can't, if they don't have a computer, or anything, any electronic device. So basically, this is our campaign offering, so 13 months for the cost of 12, they can pay monthly with pre-authorized credit cards, which for a fan, for an adult, it's around $25, so it's pretty affordable and quite competitive, especially with private industry as well. They can actually put their, their pass on hold, the yearly pass on hold, which is a nice benefit for people going away during the summer. And also, another thing that we're going to be promoting is that to buy passes before the rates will change, not the yearly pass, but the other passes, before March 1st. It's kind of our big push to get people in the doors. So in January, what you're going to see next, it's going to be a New Year's resolution. Most people are looking to get fit and, and have, create their New Year's resolution by either January or February, we'd like to capture that market, so that's just an idea. The mediums that we will be using, that we will be continually using throughout the entire, sorry, yes, is going to be digital advertising, flyers, newspapers, earned media, that's newspapers, editorials, and social media campaigns. And this is just as an overview of our grand opening camp, our grand open campaign offering so far. Just as a reminder, all attendees will receive a coupon for the first week free, they'll be entered to win a one-month pass, free tours for freshments and cakes. That is our target for the grand opening. We have, we have set a big hairy goal, and this, this is the one that we're trying to achieve. And then for the open house, we also have a target of 1,100 people. The reason why we chose 1,100 people is because that is the building's capacity, and it will be going from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM. And as you see there, there's going to be more draws, demos, tours, and maybe get attendees to try a free class. And that's my update for right now.
Great. Questions? Councilor Martin?
Yeah, I don't really have a question, thank you very much. So for the pass, I mean, this TIM's Community Center is going to be something the City of Langley has never seen before. Can you tell people what they get, what they can use with their pass? I don't want to put you on the spot, maybe Ms. Hilton would be a better fit.
Through Your Worship to Councilor Martin, certainly. So with the new fee structure, it's a one pass for everything, so that'll get you anything that is not a registered program. So you can do fitness classes that are drop-in, you can do the gym programs that are drop-in, you can use the weight room, you can use the walking track and the games room.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilor Martin. Councilor Arnold?
Okay, the passes that, that we're all giving out all over town, and that I'm seeing all over town.
That's good to hear.
On the, on the front, that's the go-in for one free visit, right?
Correct.
On the back is the seven free ones. Do you have to book the seven free ones, or say you want them before you have your first visit, or can you go in, have your first visit, and then once you fall in love with the place, you can go back on your way out and get the, the seven?
So that's the idea, is that they come in, they would register in our ActiveNet or RecConnect, and then they can apply for the seven days. They're both valid until April 30th, so they can do it at any time.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Vandenberg, and then Councilor Stortaboom.
I noticed on the open house, we were looking, there is a point there about demos and that sort of thing, how we thought maybe about incorporating some of the grocery stores to come in and do, like I know Savon Foods, does their healthy eating bits and stuff like that, and maybe some promotional with the radio stations?
We have looked at doing radio stations, we have just contacted them, because it is quite far in advance for radio stations, but we are looking into it.
Okay.
With the grocery stores, they have been our biggest help, actually, they've been handing out all of the stocking stuffers. So Savon Foods and No Frills, they requested, overall, we have 42,000 stocking stuffers out there, and they have been a great help, and have been pushing the, them throughout our community and making, making it, users aware, so.
Okay.
I, I think we'd be happy to include them.
Yeah, just a thought, because I know they do that on the commercials or whatever, so I might come down and do it.
Thank you. Councilor Stortaboom?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you very much Samantha for your presentation. I think you've really gone at it in a wonderful way, with a lot of positive enthusiasm, as you have since you began with us here, and I think your service to us as a communications officer is greatly appreciated. Councilor Arnold actually got the answer to the question I was going to ask, in that these are valid until April the 30th.
Correct.
So thank you very much for that. And Councilor Albrecht suggested maybe we should have a council exercise day, so maybe that's a...
Well, actually, we are thinking for February that we're going to get you involved with moments of activity.
Very good.
So it's, it's upcoming.
So just so everybody knows...
Be on your toes.
I think it's a good idea, but it wasn't my idea to begin with, okay? But thank you very much for your presentation. We're all very excited about the new TIM's facility, and we encourage the community to get behind it and enjoy it. It's going to be brand-new and wonderful. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilor Stortaboom. Councilor Arnold?
Yeah, the whole exercise thing, I, my exercise is basically, it's the same as what Red Skelton used to talk about. I wake up in the morning, and if I don't smell flowers or, or see candles, then I, you know, check my pacemaker and make sure it's working, and if, and if everything looks fine, then I'm up and going. But, I forgot what I was going to say in the first place now. It'll come back, it'll come back to me about 2:00 in the morning.
Okay.
Some timers set in, Councilor Arnold, I know. I'd give good money to see you in a Zumba class, though, but...
It's fun, don't knock the same class.
I know, I got roped into one of those about a year ago. It was a lot of fun, and I'm looking forward to the opening. Thank you for your presentation. I know this, this council has worked very, very, very hard, you know, Val, Gail, Rudy, Paul, Jack, myself, on making this a great facility, and we, as a council, are really looking forward to the opening. Thank you for your presentation, look forward to seeing who you can, yeah, commandeer to come out and, and see us.
Okay.
We're waiting for a couple of big names, you know?
Yeah.
You know, the Root Bear, or something like that, right? You know, ribbon-cutting. Oh, no, Councilor Arnold.
Okay, I didn't have to wait till 2:00 in the morning it came back. When, when they were talking about, we were talking about radio stations... they were talking about, we were talking about radio stations, have we given any thought to having somebody, whether it be somebody from Recreation Staff or the mayor or somebody, go on, say, Global AM within, within a week of it or something, and do a little plug then? Or do they charge, charge to do that?
From what the consultants have told me, that usually radio stations do charge for, to come to an event. So it's something that we're going to have to evaluate once, once we kind of figure out all of the details. Of course, we would love them to come, but I'm just not sure at this point of the financial cost associated with it.
Well, I know that they do tend to have guests on, on the morning show, but I was never quite sure whether those are people who, because they're pushing something, have to pay and make, basically it's a paid advertisement, or whether it's simply an interview as to what's going on.
I'm, I'm, we'll be more than happy to look into it, for sure.
Okay. Thanks.
Counselor Martin?
Thank you. Well, just further to that, I know when Mark Rodrigo used to do the, the morning weather, quite often he'd mention activities that were going on. And I know that he's mentioned the Langley, you know, whether, what, something going on in Langley. So, and I don't think that's, that's a cost. But yeah, if you're going to look into that, Samantha, that'd be great.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your presentation. One last item under the mayor's report is that, is the time for giving. The Langley Christmas Bureau is working with families right now, and it's quite exciting to be over there to watch the people come in at the Langley Christmas Bureau. And the event that was held just a couple of weeks ago, I know Counselor Vanderbroek was at that event. The Christmas tea raised over, netted over $32,000 for the Langley Christmas Bureau. And to all the volunteers and the people that came out to have the tea and support this community, it's, it's quite something. And I know, looking at Graham, our staff, the staff here take care of this for us and make sure that we're, we're doing all the right things, and appreciate the work that Karen and Graham do and from the city here on behalf of the Langley Christmas Bureau. And the two co-chairs are Jimmy McGregor and Lee Castron, who put in a multitude of hours. So thank you to the community. Next item we have is a bylaw. Business part. Yeah, I know. There's always something here. Bylaw 2976, zoning bylaw amendment 20721 and 20725, Fraser Highway, first and second reading of the bylaw cited as zoning bylaw 1996, number 2100, amendment number 127, 2015, number 2976, to accommodate a three-story, 21-unit townhouse development at 20721 and 20725 Fraser Highway. And I need a motion to put that on the floor. Counselor Albrecht, seconded by Counselor Martin. And Counselor Albrecht, could you please speak regarding this particular application?
Thank you, your worship. Yeah, the APC meeting was, this proposal was placed before us, and it was endorsed without any kind of, excuse me, subjects or, or changes. It's a difficult site. It's, it's a narrow site that is a challenge to, to deal with, to begin with. We're having some walkability things, I think, incorporated into the internal network. There'll be a central mail area. There's no variances whatsoever on the site at all. There'll be dedication along Fraser Highway, and it has gone through the, the SEPT head review process by our RCMP representatives. So I'm in full favor of, of this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Counselor Vanderbroek?
Sorry, question of staff. Is this the one we're changing from the single-family dwelling to multi? Is that the next one?
Yeah. Mr. Minchuck?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through the Counselor Vanderbroek, yes, one of the two zones is currently zoned, single-family residential.
Okay. And can you just clarify what single-family residential is for me, please?
Single-family residential would accommodate a single-family dwelling or accessory dwelling and/or home occupation. It's very limited in scope.
So a house?
Just a house.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Arnold?
Yeah, just, I want to thank Counselor Albreck for handling that meeting for me. We have to blame my daughter. She goes and has a birthday the 9th of every December, so, so I couldn't be there, but he handled it quite well.
Thank you. And I think you gave him your cold, so, by the sounds of it. Yeah, so next time, he's there. Yeah. All righty. All those in favor? Against? Counselor Vanderbroek is against. Fees and charges, this is the final reading of the bylaw cited as the fees and charges, bylaw 2010, number 2837, amendment number 18, bylaw 2015, number 2977. I need a mover and a seconder. Counselor Stortebroem, Counselor Martin, all those in favor? Against? It's unanimous for. Next item we have is bylaw 2978, zoning bylaw amendment at 5290 and 5308 201A Street. First and second reading of the bylaw cited as the zoning bylaw 1996, number 2100, amendment number 128, 2015, number 2978, to accommodate a four-story, 70-unit condominium development at 5290 and 5308 201A Street. Need a mover and a seconder. Counselor Martin, seconded by Counselor Albreck. Counselor Albreck, again, could you please speak to this?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. As part of the APC, or Chair of the APC Committee, this was brought before us, and it was endorsed and accepted by the APC Committee. That's the Advisory Planning Commission, for those that don't know acronyms. But it was given full approval with no, no reservations or no changes. Again, this is a really unique situation. Again, another site that's had its challenges over time, but there's no variances required. We do have interesting features in this building in terms of like a, a dog park area, some amenities for like a walking track around the outside of it to increase the visibility and, and the SEPT head principles. And I believe the developer was even looking at implementing some aging-in-place features or possibly entertaining that. We felt that it might be a, a nice selling feature to offer. But again, it's, I think it's a great proposal and one that I will be endorsing. Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion on it? Counselor Vanderbroek?
Again, I, I'm, I'm opposed to moving over the single-family residential zone into a multi-residential zone. I believe that we've got way too many condominiums and condos. I'm not against growth. I just think we should be doing it in a different direction. And I would just like to state that publicly, that I, I think we should be looking at building houses, not town units and such.
Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Against? Counselor Vanderbroek is against. Next item we have is first, second, and third reading of the bylaw cited as the fees and charges, bylaw 2010, number 2837, amendment number 19, bylaw 2015, number 2979. The bylaw 2979 is the fees and charges by law for pavement cut fees. I need a mover and a seconder. Counselor Vanderbroek, Counselor Albreck? Is there any discussion on this? This is the, Mr. Baumhoff discussed this last time with the, the cutting of the pavement and the fees. So need a, any further discussion? All those in favor? Against? It's unanimous for. Next item we have is under Committee Reports, Recreation, Culture, and Public Art Committee. Counselor Stortebroem, would you like to present the report and the options, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the remaining piece of business associated with the Recreation, Culture, and Public Art Advisory Committee. And they brought forward this recommendation for these banners that we are welcome to choose from. Originally, I was under the impression that we would have been asking for both banners for spring and both banners for fall to be approved by City Council. But at this point, City Council is obviously welcome to choose whether or not they prefer one or the other or what have you. But these are the banners that were chosen, chosen by the committee to be displayed on the arterial connectors in our community, and it is a full submission and comprehensive in that it presented the alternatives that the RCPAC committee was in receipt of after a public call for artists to respond. So I would make a motion to accept both, or if council prefers, one or the other for spring and one or the other for fall. Maybe a little discussion would be appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Stortebroem. So you're moving that recommendation? And moved by Counselor Stortebroem, seconded by Counselor Albreck for discussion? Was there a discussion on these? Or would you like to see them go elsewhere? Counselor Martin?
Thank you. Is it appropriate to make a motion to refer this back to staff at, at this time? Or vote on the other motion first?
Through the chair of council may choose to postpone voting on this and refer to staff, and then we can bring it back to deal with it at an upcoming council meeting.
Okay.
Defer it, defer it and send it to staff?
Yeah.
Counselor Martin?
No, it's not an amendment. It's a motion to postpone. So it would basically lay the motion that is being considered on the table until staff has reviewed it.
Yes. I need a seconder then to Counselor Vanderbroek. Counselor Stortebroem?
Thank you very much. And I appreciate that this is a representation of public art in our community. If council is wanting more input, then I'll be happy to support that. But we'll see what we get if we have another call for artists and then make a decision at that time. Thank you very much.
Yep. So we're going to postpone it, and we're going to send it back to staff to have some further input on it. And any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of sending it to staff? Against? It's unanimous for sending it to staff for more input. Thank you. Administrative reports, we have a FCM, Federation of Canadian Municipalities Resolution Submission here. And the motion is that council make the following motion to the Federation of Canadian Municipalities. And the whereas is, because it's the Legals and the Federation requires that, I have to read it out. Whereas the federal government's Build Canada Grant Program generally shares the cost of all approved infrastructure projects equally among the province and local jurisdiction at one-third each. And whereas for nationally significant projects, where projects provide a greater national benefit and where communities are disproportionately and directly impacted by such project, the burden of one-third cost, one-third of the cost is inequitable and too high for the local jurisdictions. Therefore, be it resolved that the federal government's Build Canada Grant Program national infrastructure component be amended to fund a minimum of 50% of the project cost, that the motion be forwarded to Metro Vancouver Municipalities to request their endorsement, and the motion be forwarded to Mr. John Aldeg, Member of Parliament for Cloverdale, Langley City. I need a mover and a seconder. Counselor Vanderbroek, Counselor Martin, discussion at all? Discussion there? Counselor Stortebroem?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And yeah, I'll, I'll be supporting this resolution, this motion to basically increase the expenditure of federal government monies and change the formula, especially for our community, in the hope that our new MP will champion this cause for us, so that rather than paying a one-third, one-third, one-third formula, we'll be looking to the federal government to pay the 50% and reduce our burden effectively. So I'm happy to support this. Considering we're a small community with limited resources, I think it's very timely, and I appreciate seeing it at the table. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Albreck?
Yeah, I, I have to respond to this motion. I'm in favor of it as well. The, the funding formula is inequitable, and especially a community like ours. We have some significant transportation systems and networks that go through our community. The costs of overpasses or underpasses or interchanges is substantial for a community of 26, 20, 25, 26,000 people. If we're out in a remote rural area, then we wouldn't have these same kinds of dynamics playing at us. So I think it's something that is overdue to be reviewed and updated. And there has to be some semblance of, of a little more equity in the cost-sharing formula. So I would agree with it wholeheartedly. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd just like to thank Mr. Baumhoff and Mr. Chung for putting this together. It's a bit of a tight timeline to get this particular motion together, so I'd like to thank you both. Now, I'll call the question then. All those in favor? Against? It's unanimous for. Next item that we have is an appointment of a chief election officer and deputy chief election officer. As the general public knows by now, one of our council colleagues has taken ill and has resigned his seat. So that pursuant to section 41-1 of the Local Government Act, City Council appoint Carolyn Machada as the chief election officer and Paula Cusack as deputy chief election officer for the purpose of, of conducting a by-election. I need a mover and a seconder. Counselor Martin, Counselor Arnold. Is there any kind of a discussion at all?
May I just say something?
Sure. I'm just going to say that the, there is no other option here. We have to have a by-election. The legislation requires a by-election in the event of a council or a member resigning in a non-election year. And Counselor Stortebroem?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to draw attention to the fact that this is an historic by-election. I don't think the city's ever had a by-election before. And it would be my hope that we would be able to generate significant conversation around this, so that we get a good turnout from our community. That being said, too, I want to send out my well wishes to Counselor Hall and his family, and express my deep gratitude for the honor of being able to serve with him at the City Council. Off and on, we've had our ups and downs, but I appreciate the opportunity to serve with him and consider it an honor. And I want to send out my best wishes and my respects, especially this holiday season. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. To Ms. Machada, when will the election be held, and what are some of the significant factors involved here now?
Okay, so assuming this motion carries, the by-election will be held on Saturday, February 27th, with several advanced polling dates in the two weeks preceding. Nomination packages, for those interested, will be available in the administration office tomorrow morning at 8:30. The nomination period is from January 12th to the 22nd. And I think that's about all the important stuff at this point.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So I'll call the question. All those in favor? Against? It's unanimous for. So you're going to be a tad busier. A tad, yes. And so motions, none, new business. And I'd just like to bring forward, from the closed session, the, the committees that were, that were appointed. So I'm not going to read them all out. They're all out there. So... So I guess I need a mover and a seconder to bring them out of close. Counselor Albreck, seconded by Counselor Martin. All those in favor? It's unanimous for. So let's see. I'm going through, going through all my stuff. Yeah, that's it? Does anybody wish to, wish anybody else a Merry Christmas or New Year? Shorty?
Just if I may, Mr. Mayor, and thank you very much for the opportunity to draw attention to the Operation Red Nose campaign in our community. I had the privilege of going out with my namesake, Rudy, the red-nosed reindeer, to a lot of parties, inviting people to consider calling Operation Red Nose because they will take you and your car home safely. So if you are interested in taking advantage of that opportunity every weekend during this month of December, in the evening, the phone number is six oh four, four five five, eight eight four five. If you drink, please don't drive. Please call Operation Red Nose or take a cab. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. So this being the last meeting of this year, twenty fifteen, on behalf of my councilor colleagues, Counselor Vanderbroek, Counselor Martin, Counselor Stortebroem, Counselor Albreck, Counselor Arnold, and our lame Counselor Hall. I just saw him the other day, teased him a little bit. So on behalf of this council, the staff, we wish you a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. And to those that are going out, please drive safely. So I need a motion to adjourn. Counselor Arnold, Counselor Stortebroem. All those in favor? Enjoy your vacation.